Oh, you've been practicing all week?
I've been playing over it in my head. I've decided I'm not touching the gavel, so...
Well, that would be tough.
Not touching the gavel?
Yeah.
It's not mine?
No white glove.
Yo, dang, great.
He comes back and it's broken.
Oh. No.
Where's the joke? Replace it with an old hammer. We should.
All right, good evening, everyone. By the clock, I have 5:30, so I think we're ready to go. If we can take roll, please.
Ken Owens?
Here.
John Hodgkins?
Here.
Larry Sanders?
President.
John Hatcher?
Here.
All right, before we get started, Kevin, do you want to start us on pledging allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, any amendments to the agenda or declarations of conflict, ex parte contacts, and side business? No? All right. We'll go on to action item five, consent calendar approval.
Council members on the consent calendar, we have the regular council minutes of September 24th, our regular and special bills is presented in the packet. The acceptance of public infrastructure for settlement, mountain subdivision, consideration of city hall additional fine addition final plat, consideration of the draft reasoned decision for Northwest Solutions Lewis Street rezone and variance, and consideration of acceptance of infrastructure for city hall addition, our water and our sewer lines.
Any questions? Motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
I'll say.
John Hatcher?
Yes.
Ken Owens?
Yes.
John Hodgkins?
Hi.
Larry Sanders?
Yes.
Visitors comments, an opportunity to address concerns, no formal action allowed, three-minute time limit per issue, issues may be placed on a subsequent agenda, and no public comment specific to land use issues.
Hello, my name's Stacy O'Connell, 20908 North Highway 41. I would like to, like city council members, to discuss a proposed city code change. From what I understand, the city code only requires at least one public hearing. Why is there a limit? At several public hearings, the community has been prevented from speaking at city council meetings because of the city code. Three weeks ago, a public hearing on a plat was held at a PNC meeting, and another is scheduled before then this month. When those hearings reach the city council meeting, the community is not allowed to speak. Why? The public, your constituents, should be able to talk to and express their concerns. You should gather all the information, which includes comments from the community, before making a decision. The community's input is not just a formality, it's a vital part of the decision-making process. You should want to hear what people have to say, so you can make the most informed decision on behalf of our community. You miss out when people are conveying at the PNC meetings, because no one can speak at the council meetings. Final decisions are made at council meetings, not at PNC meetings, so why are comments denied at council meetings? City council meetings are crucial for both sides of the community to express themselves. At the last council meeting, one of the property owners wanted to speak, as she filled out a form, but she was also denied the opportunity to address the council. Every time the city council votes on a rezoning, plat, or any item that affects the people of our community, it's imperative that the community has an opportunity to speak. Public comments should always be allowed on every item at every council meeting. The value of these comments cannot be overstated. While one can send an email, there's no guarantee or evidence that it will be read. The best way to communicate is in person, and this direct interaction is crucial in making informed decisions that truly represent the community's needs and concerns. I strongly recommend that the city councils review the city code and make the necessary changes to ensure that the community can provide input on the issues being voted on in our city. This review is not just a suggestion, it's a crucial step towards ensuring that the community's voice is heard in the decision-making process. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Asa Gray. I'm a resident of the city of Coeur d'Alene, but I'm here tonight, I'm the elections director for Cootney County, and I'm here because we have a November 4th election coming up, as I'm sure you are all aware, and I'm trying to go around to the different cities and let everyone know about the early voting opportunities that we have at our elections department office in Coeur d'Alene. We start early voting October 20th, and it goes through October 31st, Monday to Friday, 8 to 5, and it is the same process as Election Day voting at your polling location. You just come in with your acceptable photo ID, and you're checked in to vote, you get your ballot, you cast it in a ballot box, and you leave. So it's just as secure and efficient as Election Day, but it's a great option for people who are unsure if they'll be available on Election Day, especially if your work requires long hours or different schedules. So I wanted to mention that, and also to let you know as well that we are still looking for some additional poll workers. Actually, we're looking for some still specifically in the Rathrum area, so if you or anyone you know is interested in being a poll worker, obviously you can't be one where you might be on the ballot, but anyone else is welcome to, if they're not a closely related family member, they're welcome to be a poll worker. Or council members who are up this time, you're welcome to be a poll worker where you're not on the ballot outside the city limits. I'll just put that plug in there as well. So I do have some flyers, if there's someone I could leave them with, I'd love to do that for early voting, and other than that, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to talk to you.
You can give them to Mr. Deuce over there. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, and we'll move on to, it looks like number eight, new business, consideration of in ordnance, amending the zoning map for Northwest Lewis Street, zoning map amendment.
Council members, before you is the ordinance for the public hearing that we had in front of the city council last week for the zoning map amendment and the variance. The public hearing was completed, the council voted to approve, and then these are the final documents to finalize that decision from the last council meeting. It is an ordinance, so it has the three motions to go along with that, just as an FYI.
Any questions?
Would you like me to read it? Are you okay?
I probably shouldn't read both parts.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess I could.
If there's a statement in that ordinance that has the mayor read the title, then change that to council president, please.
Got it. All right, I would like to make a motion. I make a motion that the Northwest Lewis Street zoning map amendment be placed on its first reading by title only, under suspension of the rules, and to waive its second and third readings.
Second.
John Hatcher?
Yes.
Larry Sanders?
Yes.
Ken Owens?
Yes.
John Hodgkins?
Hi.
One second here. And I'm reading everything in bold.
Just the bolded part at the top.
All right. Northwest Solutions Lewis Street rezone, an ordinance of the city of Rathrum, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, providing that zoning for approximately 0.12 acres of real property currently zoned general commercial C1 shall be rezoned to medium-density residential R2A classification, providing for amendment to the official zoning map to reflect this change, adopting findings of fact, providing for conditions of the rezone, providing severability, and providing an effective date there.
I make a motion to adopt the Northwest Lewis Street zoning map amendment.
Second.
John Hatcher?
Yes.
Larry Sanders?
Yes.
Ken Owens?
Yes.
John Hodgkins?
Hi.
I'm going to make another motion. Make a motion to approve the publication of the Northwest Lewis Street zoning map amendment by summary only, and incorporate the title of the ordinance into the body of the summary.
Second.
John Hatcher?
Yes.
Larry Sanders?
Yes.
Ken Owens?
Yes.
John Hodgkins?
Hi.
Passing. Next item 8B, consideration of job description for the Community Development Department Administrative Assistant.
Members of the council, good evening. Before you is a updated job description for an administrative assistant position. We have a few retirements coming up in our department downstairs, so we're trying to get out in front of that, so we're going to try to get this job description, I guess, revised, amended, and approved for this evening. The last time we have taken a look at this position was probably 20 years ago, because that's the person that we're looking to replace, and we hope to be hiring soon if this position is, or this job description is approved. So with that, I'd be more than happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
So Kevin, is this specifically a new position, or is this currently filled?
This is currently filled. The position that is currently filled is administrative assistant slash associate planner. So now we are amending that to now just look for a straight administrative assistant position. So what we did, council, is we took a job description that the police department had used, because it was the most recently updated, we made some changes to it, because they had some evidence protocol information in there that we obviously don't have to use for, or need, and changed the position for that. So with that, just seeking your approval.
Would you consider this more of a clerical?
Absolutely.
Our motion?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the consideration of the job description for the Community Development Department Administrative Assistant.
Second.
Larry Sanders?
Yes.
John Hatcher?
Yes.
Ken Owens?
Yes.
John Hodgkins?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Item 8C, consideration of job description for the building inspector.
Council members, this is just a new job description. The previous one was old, so it just needed updated. We do have need for another inspector, busy as you know, but if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
So this will be another net new position?
Yes.
When will this be filled?
As soon as we receive approval, we'll probably put the notice down, I would guess, next week, and then it's just a matter of applicants.
Is there a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve the job description for the building inspector.
John Hatcher?
Yes.
Ken Owens?
Yes.
John Hodgkins?
Hi.
Larry Sanders?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Darren.
All right, on the staff reports, starting with city administrator.
Council members, on my administrative report, the big thing to talk about has been the city hall project. It's taking up more and more time, but it is moving forward. We're expecting all of the application stuff to be submitted soon, and we're working on some things we needed the final plat for in order to continue to move forward, but we're discussing everything from electrical design to door locks to everything in between. So hopefully we get all these things reviewed and approved by builders and you name it, so that we can get moving on the construction of it. We've also had several meetings with different groups, it's shown here on the, on the report, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
How are we doing on timeframe on our, how are we tracking progress?
Our progress of our time, we're actually behind schedule on some things and ahead of schedule on others, so probably a net watch, but if we can get started with foundational stuff, footings and things like that this fall, it'll actually help to speed up the process. The initial footings and stuff like that were kind of being planned for the spring in the first place, but we've got a lot of work to get done in order to get there. Our big, big thing is getting a steel package together, so that we can get bids on that steel package, and then they have to have time to generate the steel for the package. We're currently looking at an estimated date of steel arrival probably in April or May of next year, just based off of the size of the package, so even though we may get started, there may be a month of no work as they finish up what they're working and have to wait for steel to arrive, but we'd still be pretty close to on schedule. They're estimating that we should be completely enclosed by next fall, and then it's all work interior and exterior after that, but still with a move-in date of July of '27.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Public Works, I'm here.
I'll let you go first, Chris. If you're sure. Thank you. Council members, in front of you is the Public Works field staff report for the month. You can see our numbers for our work orders, our locates, chlorine samples, bacteriologic tests. In addition to that, we assisted the Parks Department in removal and hauling off of the trees to kick off the downtown revitalization, and from our employee that came out and helped, he said he actually had a really good time doing it. We also conducted two sets of interviews for our two utility worker positions that were open, and we just hired one on Tuesday, and the other one accepted his letter, his offer letter, and we're waiting on his background check to come back, and so that will fill the two utility worker positions. One thing that was interesting to note, we removed a really large clog from a discharge pipe in lift station number two, so we actually had to shut down the station for a number of hours while we removed that. Actually had to remove the piping and literally clean out the gravel that was packed inside of it, and that was caused by a pump that was in the motor shop, and so everything just dropped out into the spool that discharge was, so we had to get that out, and that was lovely, and we're already starting to bring the plows in for their inspections and any repairs, and then we also have a new mechanic that's going to start the 14th, and he will start training at that point. And also, we've been working with JV to assist them in the water master plan, and actually to dovetail into Kevin's report, he reached out to them and got some additional requests for pressure data on each side of Lancaster Road with our valve open and our valve closed between the two, so that we can get some good data on that and take that moving forward.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll be part two. Normally, I have to follow parts, but today I get to follow a sewer pump.
It's all uphill from here.
Exactly, right? A couple of big things we have going on is, today we kicked off construction for the Main Street downtown revitalization stuff for our CDBG project. So that has started, it's going to be slow going, however, the clock started today. They started the demolition activities, they're on that northeast corner right now, McCartney and Main Street, breaking up the concrete curbs and sidewalks. So yeah, so they're going to be working, we basically have informed business owners, or the businesses, and all impacted, even residents that we have that have apartments above, you know, up above a couple of businesses, to let them know that it's basically a three-phase project. Phase A is going to be that eastern or southern side, however you want to orient yourself, of Main Street between Mill and McCartney, and then we come to our side, which is where city hall was at, or the west side, between, you know, McCartney and Mill Street, and then we move down to the section that's on the east side between Mill and Coraline Street. So as you may recall, in their contract, they are, need to be completed from start to finish in basically four weeks, to avoid, you know, getting assessed liquidated damages, and, but I would say everything's going well, we are reviewing some mittles that are coming in, requests for information, yeah, so seems to be going well, but it's day one. So not going to be a fun project, however, we're going to try to do our best to make sure it's as least inconvenienced as possible, understanding that we're tearing up sidewalks in directly in front of businesses. So that's the big one we have going. The next project is, we're still doing a lot of utility coordination effort with regards to Lancaster Road in general. KUC is doing some utility relocation work, where they're going to be setting some new poles, or moving poles back, because they're upgrading their facilities. That comes into play, because we have a roundabout that is 90% designed, and so we're coordinating utility relocation efforts at that, at that intersection, and it tails off into both the east and the west side of that intersection, continuing to coordinate with the Vista. So yeah, so that looks to be still like it's going to be a spring, summer construction project, so hopefully we'll have, you know, that project on the street out to bid in the spring and go from there, so that project is taking place. We have a couple of other projects that we're managing or designing in-house. Chris is favorite, trying to take his lift station number two offline, so trying to put in about 6,000 feet of sanitary sewer, that will basically take that lift station offline and pump every, pipe everything directly into the Greensbury Lift Station. It's just an older, you know, lift station that's been there for, you know, what, three, maybe four decades now? Early 90s, somewhere in there, so it's showing some age, and so that would be nice to get that done, and as someone who should, you know, was responsible for the operations of our sanitary sewer collection system, less lift stations, the better, so just less maintenance or things that can go wrong, things with mechanical, electrical, that type of thing, anytime you let gravity do your job, seems to go a lot better. Chris mentioned the water master plan, that's ongoing, however, I just want to let you know that we did hear about the complaints about some pressure issues in the Brookshire subdivision, and so Chris mentioned that we were setting pressure gauges in both Brookshire and then north in that Corbin Crossing area, we just wanted to look at those two different situations. Right now, or not today, but typically those have been separate zones. We had installed booster pumps at Thayerwell number two, I don't know, five, seven years ago, somewhere in that range, and we had isolated, basically North Ranch at Corbin Crossing, that whole development, that whole northeast corner, isolated because it was at a peak, you know, as far as elevation, and now at Brookshire, you've heard them complaining about some water pressure issues, so we're in the process of evaluating that. I will tell you the preliminary findings that we're seeing, just from a few days of monitoring, is it all happens right thing first thing in the morning, and guess what happens first thing in the morning? People wake up, they take showers, and their irrigation systems kick on, all at the same time. So we are seeing pressure drops, you know, in that location, it does recover well, but still within acceptable pressure operating conditions, obviously with, you know, winter shutdowns occurring on people's individual irrigation systems. You will see that matter subside until we get back into it in the summer again. So we're going to be evaluating, kind of trying to expedite portions of the master plan to see what we should do there. Chris and I probably already have a good answer for what to do there, just needs to get confirmed by the computer modeling efforts that our consultants doing for that, so that's the big thing. Oh, also, we have a water line project, but we don't have any survey information yet. We're looking at extending Water Main from Highway 41 all the way to North Idaho College, there on Lancaster Road, to help offset some of those pressure situations, and also it helps us with redundancy and looping of our, our water system in case we do have a temporary outage here or there. I'm sure there's other projects, the big ones, Main Street, only untouched on city halls and other big project that we are managing in-house from the inspection side, so yeah, seems to be going as can be expected. We are hitting the crunch time of the year, October, November, where every developer is wanting to get everything surface-related in, just because of weather conditions. So yeah, we're going to be tasked a little bit, as we always are, so we're ramping up our expectations with regards to what's happening, so we're certainly in the loop. And speaking of some of that, we hope to have Greensbury Road back open next week. It's been shut down for quite some time on a water main extension as part of a economic development initiative associated with that urban renewal area, and that, you know, that Lancaster and Greensbury Road, so that's been shut down for some time. They were going to pave it this week, but they're getting delayed by availability of paving contractors because of interstate work that's taking place, you know, on our highway network, so that's it, but other than that, I got a full report in there on other commercial projects and residential projects, if you happen to have any questions, I'll be trying to answer those.
Thank you.
What is, what is the water pressure drop to in 50?
What is it?
What is the water pressure drop to during the peak usage?
Again, it's preliminary, we're seeing it get to right at 35, in that range, at the very lowest.
How do, how long does it stay there?
I, Ken, for me, right now, it's just like watching a, a heart monitor on, you know, it just, you see a line go down, and then you see the spike go back up, so I can't tell you the duration, I can tell you when it happens in the morning, you know, that 5:00 AM, what, 5:30 AM, somewhere in that range, and then it recovers very, very quickly, but it's... We're speculating, showers, irrigation systems kick on, demand goes up, you're at a high point in our water system, you know, already, because you're at the highest point of the city of Rathrum for our water system. Yeah, we're hitting kind of a perfect storm on it, but we will have a, we'll have some answers for that, on how to get that resolved.
So that's all considered normal usage, right?
Yeah, right now it's normal.
Normal summer usage.
Yep.
So, so, wait, is that part of a loop system, Brookshire?
Yeah, everything is part of a loop system.
Can you explain what that means? I have no clue, right?
It's just having multiple pipes connect to, you know, keeping our water system connected, so that it differentiates, you know, you get so much flow going this way, and so much flow going this way, it can feed instead of flow going through one specific route. Brookshire is a little bit unique in that we have two points of connection, however, we have isolated one of the locations, because we were trying to stabilize pressure in that Corbin Crossing area, but it is interconnected, but right now it feeds from a main water main that's 16 inches in diameter in Meyer Road, so...
Well, this main, you're going to run from 41 to North Idaho College, is that going to help with?
Certainly won't hurt. I can't tell you exactly from computer modeling, we haven't seen any of those preliminary results back from the consultant on, because what, what they will have is they will draw in a line network, they'll have all our flows, all our pressures, our elevations of our tanks, what our pumps run, and our, you know, production wells. They can input all that information, and then we can do an iteration where we say, okay, what happens if we drop in this line segment at this location? What does it do to our overall? What does it do to our overall network with a, you know, basically a homogeneous demand that's taking place? So no changes in, you know, demand from the system. And then we can see, you know, how much we can expect for that to improve. It won't be as much as what you think. You know, you're probably talking, you know, three to five pounds pressure improvement. The bigger thing we're looking at is availability to provide flow through our, our system. So it just gives us more capability of having steady flow events throughout our water distribution system in that part of their, part of town, so.
So most of the new homes now come with like a well-tron baffle on them, right? Isn't that to help stabilize pressure?
I don't know what most homes come with, though.
You don't?
I don't. I, I do know that, for instance, like here, where we're kind of down in the sunken hole, you know, right down the street here on Highway forty-one, the established part of Rafterham, we sit in the bowl. There's a lot of people that have internal pressure-reducing valves inside their homes, just simply because the pressure situation is elevated there compared to Brookshire, where you start climbing in elevation, they start losing pressure. Down there is just the opposite, which is kind of typical Cootin County, Rowan Hill-type situation with partial water pressure. I don't know what happens in homes that are, what they're building. Good, good news is I have Darren with me to kind of answer that if I need to, and if he's seen any of that plumbing fixtures, as far as if they're doing anything special inside homes that are more or less in our new growth areas on that southern side of Rafterham.
Thanks for explaining it.
I try.
Is there an ETA for when we're gonna see that modeling completed and get the analysis of?
There is. It's ongoing. We actually have a meeting coming up next week to kind of see where the status of that is. So I'd be much more versed to be able to explain to you where we are at the overall schedule. I will tell you that by the time we, at the time we had signed the contract with J U V, we expected it to be a twelve-month period of time. I don't recall how long ago it was that we signed that contract, but I wanna say it was June, April, somewhere in that range. So, yeah, I'm expecting by spring we will, or even by this winter, have preliminary results. And then they will finalize their results and compile those in one big, you know, report.
And then, switching topics back to A on the list, which is the citywide speed study, ETA on when we're gonna get the finalized phase-two speed study report?
It's done.
Oh, okay, sorry. In here it says.
I, I apologize, John. I am classifying phases as, the first phase was when we did special condition situation where we're talking about school systems, parks, high, you know, pedestrian activities such as downtown Rafterham, that type of area. We adopted special conditions for our, I called that phase A. Phase B, we wanted to give the police, you know, something to be able to hang their hat on with regards to residential speed zones. So we had completed a lot of individual residential streets. And now our third phase, we're gonna get back into doing the Bagels, the Myers, the Greensferries, the Lancasters, the bigger roads that are.
Trails.
Not Highway forty-one, not Highway fifty-three. Those aren't our roads. We don't have control, but, yeah, our bigger.
When are we hoping to be done with that?
Don't know. Haven't been able to get my inspector out to do any of that work, because he's turning and burning, so. Last year, we were very fortunate. We were able to do a lot of stuff in the winter because we didn't have, you know, you know, freezing, you know, freezing or ice-covered roadway situations. So we didn't have any, I forget, basically, we, all our conditions were, were free of all that, so it was free-flow traffic situations, which is what we need to be able to do the speed study. If we run into situations where it's ice-covered, snow-covered roadways, yeah, we're, you know, we're gonna be out of luck.
And then, last question I have, on the Lancaster-Meyer intersection, when we do start putting that roundabout in, is that going to detour east and west on Majestic out to Lancaster?
Yes.
Okay, so through the neighborhoods?
Yeah. Yeah, we talked to the business owner there on that southeast corner about his convenience store gas station that he has, and kind of explained to him that, yeah, we're still gonna have a sign up that says, open the business, you know, local, you know, local traffic, open the business. It's not ideal, but we're basically shutting everything down as it heads westbound at Railway Avenue. We'll have basically signs offset, but we've already spoken to the business owner, and we still think we're going to make some tweaks here and there when that comes about. But it's premature, a little early, but probably not early enough to reach out to that, that business owner, because they're gonna be impacted by what's taking place, so.
Okay. Thanks, Ken.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Just as a point of clarification on Kevin's comments on the downtown revitalization, the thirty-day window starts at each phase, on day one of each phase, not all three phases in thirty days.
I was gonna ask that question, but I just thought that was.
Well, I apologize. I apologize.
Because some of the scheduling is three weeks to do the job, so there's a possibility that that may be done sooner than ninety days, and it also may, each phase will consider the weather forecast for the next three weeks before they start that, so that they're not pouring cement in freezing temperatures.
Thank you, Leon. I scare at that stuff all the time, so when I speak, sometimes it's, I'm thinking a different way, but maybe I'm not communicating that way, so thank you for clarifying that.
Next up, Chief Haley.
All right, it's good to be in front of you all, council, tonight. A little different than the last council meeting, so it's been seven days now that I've been in the position, and it's been very exciting. I've had a good chance to get to chat with a lot of the officers, other people within the town, conducted my first ride-along with one of the officers yesterday. That's one of the things that I really wanna get going on, and just be able to look at and evaluate a lot of things. So you have in your packet, the, you know, the statistics over the last month. I look forward to changing the way those come to you, and some more information and more broken-down statistics as we move forward. So we're working on that. Joe's been helping me get that set up on my computer, and we got some other agencies that'll assist us with finishing that side up. But just really wanna express my excitement to be here. Got to go to my first Lakeland Hawks game on Friday, so it was a great game to go to, just really get to see a sense of the community around, and just start to fully get a sense of what I've jumped into. And so, like I said, excited. I go home tired, but ready for the next day, and just look forward to continuing, continuing those pieces. We have a all-staff meeting tomorrow that I look forward to meeting with everybody and kind of giving a little vision and taste of where we're headed and where I'd like to see the police department as we move forward over the next years.
And I love seeing the trends, you know, where, where we're at year over year, and, you know, as we continue to build out over the years where we're at. But I think one of the things that, and I, I don't expect any answers tonight, but something that I'd love to hear is, is really just the, what I would consider a considerable amount, or sorry, decrease in the number of traffic stops. I don't know if we've just de-emphasized them, and we're just not doing them, but, I mean, one of the main complaints that I get from residents is the conditions of the roads, and that they feel that they're dangerous, and that people are speeding constantly, things like that. And then I look at the statistics where, you know, compared to last year, most months are, are down considerably for traffic stops, so.
John, I might be able to address that. This year, we saw a drastic reduce in grant funding for those extra shifts that created those extra stops. So we lost a lot of funding this year for those items.
Yeah, and I would, I would understand, like, March, right? That, that makes perfect sense, but, oh, so we're doing them every month? We have.
We don't necessarily do them every month, but we get those grant opportunities multiple times throughout the year.
Okay. Now, like I said, I would, I would expect, like, March, right? There's a big drinking holiday in March, right? And we went from last year from almost seven hundred to this year to two hundred, right? So things like that, right? That just stand out. I understand holidays and not having the availability to do those extra funding events, but I would say overall, for the year, we are definitely down. So if that's the explanation, that's the explanation.
Certainly, councilman, I, I can understand that. So that's obviously part of the direction I wanna go in, is a very proactive aspect, not just in traffic stops, but at being out in the community, just talking with people in the neighborhoods as well and checking on those. So I can understand, you know, concerns, just looking at the numbers. There are stories that, you know, having officers out on leave and everybody else filling in, and those kind of things can build up over time. So those are, those certainly play into that, but that's the type of extra data that, and information that I do wanna provide you going forward.
And, and I appreciate that, because there's, there's reasons to drink every month, you know? And these aren't DUI stops, these are traffic stops, but, but we have been short staff for several months, and we still are. So therefore, you're, you're going to be reduced in your activities or your capabilities to perform your duties. It's just part of the nature of the, of the job, so I can understand a little bit of a decrease here, so. Hopefully, what, how are we doing on that? You said you had fourteen applicants for this?
We had fourteen applicants. They tested this last Sunday, Monday. Six went to the oral boards, and we moved forward, three into backgrounds, so that, we have three current openings, thanks to you all approving two new positions, starting with the first. So we have three backgrounds going on. You know, there can always be attrition during that, but, so we're keeping the application process still open in order to continue the applications. But these three, we hope to be able to get through those background packets and, if able to, give offers to start the academy in January, so, which we put them, you know, on the road, maybe by themselves by the end of July. So it's a long process with field training, but we are making certain headway with it.
It's pretty, pretty phenomenal, considering the news. I mean, ISP apparently can't get people at all, so the fact that we've been able to get as many candidates as we have and find three that will work is great.
Certainly.
All right, next up, Eric.
Members of council, you have a Park and Rec staff report in your packet. Just to cover a couple highlights, we're at the tail end of our fall adult softball, co-ed and women's. We're also at the tail end of fall soccer and fall volleyball. We had about five hundred kids participate in our fall soccer program, so it's a lot of, lot of kids. We're at the tail end of our K through fourth grade basketball registration. That filled up really fast. I think we have room in a couple of our age groups still, but everything's pretty much full there, so. Coming up on October twentieth, we'll be blowing out and closing bathrooms. We'll be blowing out all of our irrigation lines. And then this past Saturday, we had our Oktoberfest. It was our fourth annual. We had great weather, had a solid turnout, went really well. We had that out at Majestic Park. And then reminder, we have the veterans' recognition ceremony coming up. That'll be at the Lakeland High School in the Commons. That's November eighth. It starts at eleven, doors open at ten. That's the event that we partner with the local American Legion and Northwest Guardian And then our next Park and Rec Commission meeting will be coming up in November. It'll actually be a special meeting, because we're bumping it up a week because of the holiday for Thanksgiving. Other than that, that's all I have, unless you guys have questions.
On the basketball, are we still doing well with our gymnasiums and our scheduling for games and practices and stuff?
It's been really, going really well.
Has it since we had our meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, good, good. Okay.
Fact, I've heard from some outside community that they've been trying to get gym time, but we have it all locked up, so. But once we get our rosters made and schedules, some of those blackout dates will go back open.
Sure.
But until we get all of our stuff scheduled and planned, it's blocked, blocked out for the city, so it's been going really well.
Good.
Do we, do, we don't pay for any of that, is that correct?
No.
Okay. So, so by us having those dates blocked off, it could potentially be blocking revenue from the school district?
Potentially, yeah. I mean, if they're turning people away, yeah.
But they do have a thing where if a certain percentage of the students in that program, like for basketball, are actually Lakeland School District kids, then those fees are waived as well, so. But one, we did, like we did last year, we sit down with those groups, and we go through the schedule together, and we're able to put together a program that allows everybody to get the dates that they want. So that's what we did last year. I'm sure that's what's gonna happen in, in this year too, because it worked so well, and we'll keep moving forward with that.
Do we know when that's gonna happen, Eric?
When we sit down with everybody?
Yeah.
Here soon, yeah. What we, what we've, and we're, we're kind of working on it, because it's all kind of new. It's a new system. Technically, we sit down at the beginning of the season, or when school gets back in, so it'd be sometime in early September. But they just put together a new online scheduling software, which wasn't in place yet. But moving forward next year, they have a new facility request software. It actually just went online probably two to three weeks ago, so everything's kind of brand-new, so.
Awesome. Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you. Moving on, visitor comments, another opportunity to address concerns. No formal action allowed, three-minute time limit per issue. Issues may be placed on a subsequent agenda. Anybody have any comment? All right. Moving on, number ten, mayor and council announcements. Mayor's not here, so, Ken? John?
You good?
Larry, you got anything?
I'm golden, thank you.
All right. The only thing I had, I talked to Lake's Highway District this morning, super-nice people. They said they are still on schedule to have Lancaster opened up the thirty-first of October, barring any unforeseen circumstances. So here's hoping. All right? And without any further business, we are adjourned.